We've got time, it's more than good. The license, we've got their licenses.
I expect you to remind me. You don't have anything going on, right?
No.
This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecal, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Anne Kramer. Ms. Kramer, will you please call the roll?
Director Barlow?
Here.
Treasurer Cook?
Here.
Director McLaughlin?
Here.
Clerk Marvin?
Here.
Chair Nathan?
Here.
Director Whitehorn?
Here.
Vice Chair Workman?
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with your eye indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/assembly. Item three is comments to the board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication by email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the board. The purpose of comments to the board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the School Board about issues that fall within our authority. The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. Persons who want to make comments to the board must fill out the online form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the School Board meeting to sign up for a time slot. The form is available on the RPS website and on the assembly main page. By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this Public Comment Policy 206 and Procedure 206A. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to the table. If you have written materials for the Board, provide it to the Assistant School Board Clerk, and she will distribute them to Board members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. Please direct your remarks to the School Board. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed right there. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker is Amelia Barkmire. Our next item is a public hearing on the proposal to close Mighty Oaks Early Learning School. Under Minnesota Statute 123B-51 subdivision 5, the School Board must hold a public hearing before officially closing a schoolhouse. The hearing must address the necessity and practicability of the proposed closure of Mighty Oaks, which includes the following reasons: Identified concerns about the facility's location not being desirable for current or future educational programming or community use; Projected declining enrollment related to declining birth rates in Rochester, Olmsted County, Minnesota, and the United States; Anticipated general fund expenditure reductions of approximately 13 million needed before the 2026-2027 school year; Expected staff time, contracted services, and budget resources required to mow the lawn, remove snow, monitor the well and septic systems, maintain electricity and natural gas, repair roof or window leaks, secure the building against vandalism, and maintain property and liability insurance. We now begin the hearing on the proposed closure of the Mighty Oaks Building. If there are members of the public who wish to make public comments on the closure, please raise your hand to be recognized. Once you are recognized by myself, the Board Chair, please come to the table. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed on the timer. Please begin your remarks by stating your name and your relationship to Rochester Public Schools. Is there anyone who would like to make comments on the closure of Mighty Oaks? Is there anyone who would like to make comments on the closure of Mighty Oaks? And for our final time, is there anyone who would like to make comments on the closure of Mighty Oaks? Seeing no more requests for comment, we now conclude the hearing on the proposed closure of the Mighty Oaks Building. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the proposal to close Skyline. Under Minnesota Statute 123B-51 subdivision 5, the School Board must hold a public hearing before officially closing a schoolhouse. The hearing must address the necessity and practicability of the proposed closure of the Skyline Building, which includes the following reasons: Identified concerns about the facility's structural conditions; Projected declining enrollment relating to declining birth rates in Rochester, Olmsted County, Minnesota, and the United States; Anticipated general fund expenditure reductions of approximately 13 million needed before the 2026-2027 school year; Expected staff time, contracted services, and budget resources required to mow the lawn, remove snow, secure the building against vandalism, and maintain property and liability insurance; Predicted interest in redevelopment of the site for other residential uses. We now begin the hearing on the proposed closure of the Skyline Building. If there are members of the public who wish to make public comments, please raise your hand to be recognized. Once you are recognized by the Board Chair, please come to the table. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated, and you will have three minutes to speak, and the timer is displayed at the front of the room. Please begin remarks by stating your name and your relationship to Rochester Public Schools. Is there anyone who would like to make comments on the closure of the Skyline Building? Is there anyone who would like to make comments on the closure of the Skyline Building? And for our final time, is there anyone who would like to comment on the closure of the Skyline Building? Hearing no requests for comments, we now conclude the hearing on the proposed closure of the Skyline Building. Our next item is a public hearing on the proposal to close Fidel. Under Minnesota Statute 123B-51 subdivision 5, the School Board must hold a public hearing before officially closing a schoolhouse. The hearing must address the necessity and practicability of the proposed closure of the Fidel Building, which includes the following reasons: Estimated deferred maintenance of 14 million needed to rehabilitate the school's heating, ventilation, plumbing, floor, windows, and roof; Projected declining enrollment related to declining birth rates in Rochester, Olmsted County, Minnesota, and the United States; Anticipated general fund reductions of approximately 13 million needed before the 2026-2027 school year; Expected staff time, contracted services, and budget resources required to mow the lawn, remove snow, maintain electricity and natural gas, repair roof or window leaks, secure the building against vandalism, and maintain property and liability insurance; Predicted interest in redevelopment of the site for other commercial uses; And presumed options for relocation of existing programs to underutilized spaces within under-existing school facilities. We now begin the hearing on the proposed closure of the Fidel Building. If there are members of the public who wish to make public comments on the closure, please raise your hand to be recognized. Once you're recognized by the Board Chair, please come to the table. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated, and you will have three minutes to speak. The timer is displayed at the front of the room. Please begin your remarks by stating your name and your relationship to Rochester Public Schools. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on the proposed closure of the Fidel Building? Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on the proposed closure of the Fidel Building? And finally, is there anyone who would like to make public comments on the proposed closure of the Fidel Building? Hearing no comments, we now conclude the hearing on the proposed closure of the Fidel Building. Our next item is information and outreach, where we are recognizing National Information Technology Professionals Day. September 16th is National Information Technology Professionals Day. Our Rochester Public Schools IT professionals are responsible for the everyday management and maintenance of the essential networks, systems, and applications that power the technologies we use in teaching, learning, and communicating. Our IT staff is still engaged in the mammoth task of getting our technology systems up and running at the beginning of the school year. We are grateful for their skill and patience in educating our staff and troubleshooting each issue that arises. Our IT professionals face a myriad of new challenges every day, and we want them to know that they are valued members of our RPS community. Our second information and outreach item is the recognition of School Board Recognition Month. We join school districts throughout Minnesota in recognizing our RPS elected members who share their time, talents, and leadership to ensure all students receive a high-quality public education. On a personal note, I would like to add how much I enjoy being on the board with all of you. I think we would all agree that our jobs are not always easy, but our joint commitment to serving this community through conscientious oversight of our strategic plan and our finances makes our work fulfilling. And I truly believe that together, we're improving education for all students in the district. Superintendent Pecal, you had something to add?
I did. Thank you, Chair Nathan. It's always a little awkward to be recognizing your bosses, but I didn't want to let this go by. These are challenging times to be serving on a school board. And I know I'm not alone when I want to take a moment to recognize that. Joanne Barkmire's comments were extremely appropriate, but Amelia's were fantastic. So, thank you for articulating what I think a lot of us are thinking about. I mean, school boards are a unique governmental entity. I don't know if there's that many places where you can have the same job where people get mad at you for raising taxes and for lowering standards, where you get constant advice all around town about the things you're doing. Personally, I don't think they'll ever need term limits for school boards because your families beg you to stop before you actually can keep doing it. But seriously, each of you on this board are so serious, in the best sense, about kids and about our community. And so, as I was in thinking in my office, and it's not fair to typecast any of you, but as I was thinking about each of you and thinking about the order in which you sit on this dais, for Director Cook, I was thinking, your passion for literacy has made a huge difference on this board already. In fact, I admire your maybe lawyer's ability to work literacy into every subject. Director Barlow, your commitment to ethical conduct in all aspects of our work and strong values and building character in our kids is extraordinary. Director Workman, you are the history keeper in a way that has benefited me and my understanding of this community on multiple occasions. Chair Nathan, your capacity for organization and your mind for policy. And for those of you who don't see it, her color coding of her notes that she takes in real time is awe-inspiring. Director McLaughlin, both your compassion married with your commitment to intellectual rigor is a very unique combination. Director Marvin, your constant focus on instruction, the quality of teaching, takes us back to the center. And Director Whitehorn, as our newest member, your passion for the kids and families that face the greatest obstacles to success in our community has already made a huge difference on our board. As I was thinking about all of you, and if I can ask Ms. Kramer to put the slide up, I was thinking about, at my college graduation many years ago, the speaker was Marion Wright Edelman, who was the Chair of the Children's Defense Fund. And this quote from that speech, which she subsequently said other times, has stuck in my head for almost 40 years, and I thought of this board that service is the rent each of us pays for living, the very purpose of life and not something to do in your spare time or after you have reached your personal goals. And so, I want to thank you for that service because you clearly don't do it for the salary or for the kudos. And in small recognition of that, I want to ask Ms. Kramer to both help me hand out some certificates as the first option, that are recognitions from Minnesota School Boards Association. And then, we have yet another token of appreciation that I think is, in my view, even more exciting. So, I'll let Anne hand those out, and then we will provide you with our final token of appreciation. And I have to say, this comes from our Chief of Schools Jackie Peterson, who many of you may know is an unbelievable baker. And so, we're going to let Anne hand these out. You will see, she actually has to get the bags correct for each of you because they are specific to you as individuals. And so, I want to thank Jackie, and I know Jackie and the entire, all the members of the Cabinet and the staff who are here, join me in thanking this board for its leadership and for the work that you do for kids every day. So, I told our chair, she had to hold one up so you could see what Jackie did. It is, Chair Nathan, thank you, a cookie you can eat with your own name.
Jackie, and for calling the Superintendent, and Anne. We can't eat them in the middle of the meeting, though.
You're the bosses.
Onto the work, then. Our next item are our board member updates. Does any board member have updates from their committees or any other information to share? Director Barlow?
I'd just like to offer one comment regarding the first day of school at John Adams Middle School. What a joy it was to visit a truly neighborhood school and see the excitement on behalf of not only the principal, and it begins at that level, but throughout the office staff. As I entered the building, I had opportunity to speak with the office manager, who she herself has gone through Rochester Public Schools, Elton Hills, John Adams, John Marshall, and has been at the district a number of years. Her husband works with the district, three of her children work with the district. And I said, you know, I'll put a, talk to the superintendent about a goat award, perhaps. But it just struck me as being, that's the commitment. And RPS is a place for everyone. And that family value and ethic, I thought, was so significant. Had opportunity to speak with teachers, very excited, hands-on, greeting the students as they arrived on the buses. Couple of SPAD ESPs, was able to speak with them. Mental health practitioner, able to speak with her. And everyone just reflected that same level of commitment to the neighborhood school. And the students, who, the returning students seemingly, the staff knew them all, greeted them all, embraced them all, and encouraged each of them. I thought, how powerful. The community as a whole, we need to see more of that. And maybe our attitudes and outlook might change regarding what it is. What makes RPS so unique? And I believe the district of choice and preference, and just seeing the joy. And I like to believe the teachers are still excited, and the students are as well, going into now this first or second full week of school. But it was a blessing to me to be there. Thank you for sending out the invitations and providing the opportunity. Thank you for sending out the invitations and providing the opportunity.
Well, I also visited schools on the first day. I went to Kellogg on their first day, and then I went to Riverside. And I stood outside at Kellogg where all the students were gathering outside the door, didn't let any, they weren't letting anyone in until the bell rang, and I thought, how is this going to go? Because they were all very excited, and there was lots of squeals of friends reuniting. But went in, helped hold the door, helped greet some people, and by 8:45, the principal was giving me a tour because they had had the upgrades over the summer, and the hallways were dead quiet. And we peeked in classrooms, the students were all sitting, getting their introductory remarks from their teachers. And it was just, it was assigned to me, everybody was ready to go. The students are ready to go, the teachers are ready to go. And then I went to Riverside the next day, and like you, Director Barlow, all of these teachers who already know all these students, and, you know, the, some of the students didn't know who their homeroom teacher was, and they were going in different doors. And Patrick Manassala, the music teacher there, was serenading them with a guitar on the playground. So of course, there were tears. I don't know that there were more tears from parents than I saw from students. But yes, it, that first day of school, I wish we could, I know we captured it in pictures and showed it on some of our social media, but the conversations and the interactions were just a great way to kick it off, and I too hope everybody is still hanging in there in Week Two. Anything else? Any other committee meetings or anything? Director Marvin?
And as long as we're on the topic of first day of school, I was at Gage and Century, and the kids at Gage were so excited, they were running to get into that building. The students at Century were not running. But I was amazed that even at Century, there were so many staff members there that greeted them. There was a celebration in the auditorium, but that they knew the kids. They knew the new ones, the ninth graders who had been there for a day already, and they greeted the returning students. And that kind of, the importance that every student who showed up already knew a staff member, and the staff member knew and remembered them, and that is so important. But they weren't running. Too cool. Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to our consent agenda, items 8.1 through 8.6. Would any, remember, like, any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Our next item is our focus topic, the 2026-2030 strategic, wow, those dates, Strategic Plan Update. Superintendent McHale?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to invite our lead consultant, Spencer Sherman, to come up and join us. Board members met Spencer when he facilitated a discussion of the strategic plan in a study session. At that time, I didn't introduce him very formally, but now I am going to take advantage of the mic to do that. Spencer is with the national consulting firm, education improvement firm, Education First. He advises leaders on policies and programs that prepare students for success after high school in particular, has 15 years of experience in public education roles from teacher to state policymaker. He began his career serving low-income students as a teacher and administrator in New Orleans Public Schools. He then worked as chief for innovation at the Rhode Island Department of Education, where he launched many new statewide projects, including a cross-agency Career Pathways Initiative, a student-centered unified course platform, and a post-COVID tutoring program. Spencer then moved to nonprofit and consulting roles, supporting initiatives such as Indiana's high school redesign effort and California's $500 million college and career pathways legislation. Spencer earned a master's in public policy from Harvard Kennedy School and a bachelor of arts in political science from Yale University. He lives with his wife in Minnesota, where he enjoys outdoor adventures and plays guitar. The only quarrel I have is it doesn't say Rochester, Minnesota, which is actually accurate. So, board members, the purpose tonight is to have Spencer give you an overview of the process through which we propose to develop our next strategic plan. The one added point I will make before I turn it over to Spencer is that I'll be working with the chair and vice chair after we get your thoughts and feedbacks on this plan to shape the board agenda items to align with the plan that Spencer's going to outline now. So thanks for coming in, and we look forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Superintendent. It's very embarrassing to hear your bio read out slowly on stage.
I cut a few lines, actually.
Good, thank you.
It could have been worse.
Appreciate it. So it's great to see you all again, and this is a follow-up from our last discussion at the study session, which, thank you so much for engaging so deeply in that. This is our chance to follow up and say what we've, how we're thinking about turning all those ideas and brainstorming and prioritization into our next steps. So I've got a brief slide presentation, and then I'll turn it over to all of you for questions. So the first thing is just, what is the purpose of the strategic plan process? I think you guys are fortunate to have a very strong strategic plan that you're building from, and so now we're trying to figure out what the next stage looks like. I'll talk through three big components. First, talk about the committees we'll be using, then the stakeholder engagement process, then how we'll turn all that stuff together into recommendations that then our organization and the RPS staff present to Superintendent for recommendations to the board. So I'll start off with just talking about the committee structure. Our idea is that we'll have three big committees. The committees will align to grade spans, so one elementary committee, a middle school committee, and a high school committee. Each committee will be structured with sort of a little nested group within a larger group. So there will be a full committee, which will have about 12 to 15 members, that'll include RPS staff, include community members, and just anyone from the broader RPS community that's interested in supporting. That'll be sort of the larger group that will be meeting to get sort of ideas, get feedback, and make sure that we're understanding what the needs are of the community. Within that, there'll be a subgroup, calling a working group, that'll do sort of the nitty-gritty day-to-day tasks of, you know, actually like, you know, creating a lot of documents and doing all the sort of day-to-day tasks that are involved, just to make sure that we've got a smaller group to get that done. That'll be the working group. So we'll have each of these, this sort of committee and smaller working group structure for each of those three committees, elementary, middle, and high. Our plan is that we would meet monthly for 90 minutes with the full committee, starting next month and continuing through January. And the working groups will be meeting bi-weekly for half an hour, oh, sorry, for an hour, just to sort of talk through what came out of the larger noncommittee meetings. So now I'll talk through about what we see as the charges for each of those committees. These charges came out of a conversation that you all led at the pre-study session, as well as what we heard from members of RPS staff and the community, and recommendations from Superintendent McHale. So first, for the elementary committee. There are three big issues that this committee will try to answer. The first is redefining district-wide option schools. So how do we think about the new, what district-wide option schools could look like? I know there's been some changes in transportation and so on, so how do we conceive what those should look like going forward? Second is empowering neighborhood schools, because the idea is not just look at DWO's in isolation, but think about, when you're an elementary school parent, what options do you have? And how do you make sure that you have high-quality options that have consistent, high levels of rigor, and that you understand, understand first what parents are looking for and how RPS can better serve them? The third is thinking about the alignment between early childhood education programs and how that connects to elementary school programs. So this right-hand part of the slide has, here's what the deliverables could look like. I'm sorry for you to consult and speak, but the things we'll give you at the end, is a better way to say it. So what we'll try to do is give you guys a menu of options. So what are some possible structures, programs, practices? How can you do this? And give different options that, we'll make recommendations, but would love to hear from you all, you know, what the final decisions are. How to better redefine what DWO's and elementary schools could look like, the neighborhood schools? And then some analysis about what that could mean for achievement, and also, I know Chair Nathan had asked a question earlier about, think about the financial implications, operational implications. How can you actually pull this off? We don't want to just give you a blue sky, we want to be realistic about what would be the best fit for RPS where it is today. So that's the elementary committee. The next committee is the middle school committee. The big focus, big guiding question is about revising course offerings. So we have, I think, one thing we hear about is accountability being a question. I know we sort of discussed at the board study session for middle school, and also middle school, you know, as a former teacher, there's always that question for middle school, it's not, it's in the middle, it's not elementary, but how can you make sure it's setting people up for what high school actually involves and make that a smoother transition? So what recommendations, so the deliverables here, the outcomes, what course offerings, electives, and accountability practices should we include in middle schools? What are some national best practices that we can add from national, like, our organization's a national organization? What can we learn from other, you know, you're not the only school district with middle schools, what can we learn from other folks and bring it to RPS? And again, how can we address achievement, engagement, and enrollment? The last group focused on high school, the overarching theme here, we're calling enhancing curricular offerings. So within that, how do you create new and restructure curricular offerings with a particular focus on what it means to transition from a high school to post-secondary? So we're thinking about dual credit, PSEO's, and our CTE programs, and the relationship where those CTE programs are offered and how they can be more accessible and prepares kids for lifelong success. And again, we'll be looking at how that impacts achievement, engagement, and enrollment. So those are the three big committees, and you can see, I sort of skipped over this at the top, an overall interest in how can this improve student outcomes, how can improve student engagement, and how can it improve enrollment, and be engaging and appealing to parents and families. All right. Now move from committees into stakeholder engagement. So two big things we're doing here. First, for public engagement, we will be releasing, assuming how this goes, this week we'll be releasing a survey where we want to hear from the community. So we asked three very basic questions, and we'll try to be compiling all the feedback to inform some of our work. And I'll read these questions here. What changes RPS would most improve educational achievement and student learning outcomes? What changes would most help increase student engagement and excitement for learning? And what changes would make RPS more appealing to families, encouraging enrollment and retention? We will break this out. If you click on the survey, it'll say, are you, do you want to come in on elementary? Do you want to come in on middle? Do you want to come in on high? You could obviously click and do it multiple times for those different audiences, but we want to see if there's differences, given our committees are focused on grade spans, if there's any differences in the engagement here for the different grades. So that should give us sort of a wide sampling of what people are thinking more broadly. We also want to do focus groups to dive in a little more deeply. So these focus groups will start in late September, later this month, and continue through mid-October, and we are trying to do three focus groups with 10 people each at each grade level. So elementary, three focus groups, middle, three focus groups, high school, three focus groups, so nine total there. And then we also want to leave some room for an additional focus group about, for particular communities, such as those who don't speak English, who may not feel as comfortable sharing in one of those targeted groups. So putting all of this together, here's what it looks like between now and April. So by April, you will get our, the final recommendations from the superintendent for the next strategic plan. Here's what we'll be doing between now and April. In September, this month, we, following this meeting, will sort of kick things off. So we'll start launching the public engagement form, the survey, the three questions that I mentioned. We will launch the focus groups, and we will start launching the committee working groups. The working groups are sort of the sub, sort of like getting stuff done, smaller group. That'll lead up to the full committees launching in October. They will meet from October through the end of January. So October, November, December, January, four meetings once a month. Then, starting in late January through February, we will have our recommendations turned over to the superintendent, who will be reviewing those, making her, making his final decisions. And then in March, based on those decisions, the comprehensive strategic plan will be created. So building on the recommendations that came out of those committees and the superintendent's recommendations. And then obviously, in April, this will go to you all for final approval. And here's just my last slide, putting all of these together. So in addition to these committees' work, we also have these performance measure teams, PMTs, that Superintendent can talk more about. That's about setting particular numerical targets for each of your goals. Starting after this, in September, we will be recruiting the committee members. So again, the committees will include members from the community, and so we want to make sure that we're recruiting, sharing the word, and glad we have some PTAs, folks like that would love to have, be part of these committees. And again, February will be the reviewing of the recommendations, March will be drafting the plan, and April will be final approval. And again, during April, we'll also try to have public town halls, or just make sure that this is not something that's done in isolation. We want to make sure, since this impacts every parent, every community member here, how can we make sure that people are aware, bought in, and excited about this vision for the future of RPS globally? And just a little note in italics here, you will be regularly updated and have the opportunity to provide input at each stage as we move forth in this process. So that's it for me, and I'll turn it over to you all for questions.
Superintendent, do you want to start, or are we looking for board member feedback first?
Well, we start board members.
Okay. Director Marvin?
This was really good, and I appreciate that this was very succinct, that we got a lot of information. I think this is really well done. For the committees, assuming that there will be 80 people who apply for each committee, I know that you said that you want the people on the committee to be a good representation of people in the district. How will you narrow it down to 12 or 15?
It's a great question. We haven't actually gotten that far yet to figure out exactly how we'll make it up, but you're right, so it's 15 people times three, so 45 members of committee for the committees total. So we want to make sure we're thinking about representation across different groups. How exactly the mechanics of that, I don't think we've figured out yet. Superintendent, anything you want to add?
It was something, I should also have acknowledged Denise Moody, who's our Director of Policy and Innovation, who will be guiding internally our strategic planning process. Denise did an extraordinary job in that exact task in our last strategic plan with seven committees. And so we're actually cutting down the committees a bit because we had a little committee fatigue last time, but we will, we've gotten pretty good at making sure that we are bringing diverse voices into this discussion, and we'll be doing that not only through the committees, but also through the focus groups and the survey. And there will be other opportunities for input even beyond the core process that Spencer has done that. So we will make sure that we are representative of our communities at the elementary, middle, and high school level in terms of demographic factors, but also in terms of their particular passions, student needs, special needs, whether it's advanced learning or students with disabilities and special education. And of course, we will make those committee names transparent and visible, and of course, their advisory. In the end, the job of putting the plan together falls to me, and the decision about approving it comes to you, but if our experience in our current strategic plan is any guide, and we do our job well, which I'm confident we will, those committee members will feel a lot of ownership of this plan. And so to this day, when I see Wale Allebide around town, he remembers specifically the commitments that came out of the committee he served on in the first strategic plan, and asks me exactly how they're going, which is wonderful, and the same is true of quite a few other people. As board members, I think it's pretty soon time to take it down, but we still have the graphic that was put together at the last meeting of those committees from our previous strategic plan out in the hallway. And I get kind of nostalgic when I look at it because it was a great final meeting where we had a graphic artist who said, okay, you've been working on this for all these weeks. Really, what do you think in the end this is going to be about? And that's what the picture is in the hallway. But it's a great point, Dr. Marvin, we do need to make sure that those committees are representative. We won't have a narrow formula, but we will be committed to inclusion in the members of those committees.
Director Whitehorn?
Just clarifying, it's 15 total for all the high schools, I mean, first school. I thought you said, I heard that I would just say 45.
Sorry. So there's three committees. So for high school, will be one committee. For all high schools, focusing on what high school should look like in RPS, that'll have 15 members. Same thing for middle and elementary. Across the three committees, be 45 total.
Director Barlow?
Two quick things. One is a question of, is there a communication strategy associated with this? Because while there may not necessarily be the high level of community, community members rushing forward to participate, there should nonetheless be an assurance that the community is well-informed, communities are well-informed, so that whoever may represent those 15 individuals will not just be individuals, but will truly be representative of constituent group, if you will. And then, secondly, deals with the public feedback. What would be a, is there a particular target goal in terms of percentage of participation? How will you know, or how should we... How will you know, or how should we assess the response if there's only five people who respond? I mean, what's the normal percentage to suggest that this was a good effort and that the community has bought in and has responded to what questions were presented to them?
Yeah, great, great question. So I think for the first point, I think that's, that's really important. We want this to be, you know, bidirectional communication. So we want to hear from people, but also this should not be some sort of like smoke-filled room where decisions get made. This should be, what do we hear from the community, and let's share it back out with the community here to get their reactions. And so we hope this is a very open process with a lot of communication, because you always want, you want to make sure that you're serving the community based on this plan. So I think that's something we definitely want to think about and do more of. I think for, sorry, your second question.
The, where was it? Focus groups?
Oh, yeah, yeah. What level of feedback would be good? So I mean, five would, five would be too small. We want more than that. I'm not sure there's a magic number here. I think one thing we're trying to do is think about a sort of all of the above approach. Almost like by definition, the people who fill out a survey are not the average person, right? Because most people don't fill out the survey. And so you always have a little of what, you know, nerds like me would call like selection bias, that the people who fill out the survey are not typical people. So what you want to do is get as many people as possible fill out the survey. We try to broadcast the QR codes and so on, and that's something that Denise is working on. We'll also try to do the focus groups, right? Just get, besides just like people do the survey, get a little more deeper flavor. And then we'd really like, honestly, just to hear from the community using the committee members, say, okay, you come from this community, what do you, what are you hearing, you know, outside? And our hope is like through that, we can sort of put together a broader picture of what this looks like. But I know, I'm sorry, it's not like a precise answer, but the more, the more you can do, the better, is basically what we're trying to do.
Superintendent. Thank you. Thank you, Nathan. Dr. Barlow, the Times, as I know you remember, that we have done the kind of feedback form that is intended to go out with multiple languages tomorrow. We have gotten thousands of responses. So I would say, were we doing a quantitative survey, you, you know, you want it, people can say it's valid with 10% of your respondents. We've, we've done higher. This will be an open forum so that people are getting to tell us whatever is on their mind. And so if we have the levels of participation that we had for this, with the feedback forms we did on cell phones, that we did on the attendance option redesign, and that we did on the first strategic plan, we'll be in very good shape on that score because we have a very engaged community. And so I'm hopeful and optimistic that we'll have the same kind. We may, we didn't put it in the plan because right now, this is an ambitious plan to get done and have you vote on by May. There may be an additional survey that I could envision us adding in the spring to test particular ideas that come out of the committees. Because what you want to do is go deep with a diverse but small number of people who can have deep conversations, including maybe working through disagreements. And I could envision us saying, we got to test this idea. And at that point, Dr. Barlow, we really would want to make sure we're getting a sufficient percentage to be representative of an opinion on a change in high schools or a change in middle schools or elementary schools. But the first stage is really, anybody who's got an idea, let us, let us know.
Thank you.
Dr. McLaughlin.
Dr. Barlow, you stole my question, so I had to think of it differently. In terms of the public feedback, though, what, first, primary question is, how long will that survey be open so people know their opportunities to respond?
Until the 23rd.
Okay. Of September. Yes. And what can we envision would be the form of the feedback back to the board?
Superintendent.
We will provide you, Dr. McLaughlin, with both a, I'm sure, transparency here, AI-aided summary, which is increasingly powerful. But we also, as you know, we did when we did the transportation redesign and others, we'll give you access to the full responses redacted for any comments that describe the idiot superintendent in language that is not appropriate for all audiences. But we will make that available to board members as part of the process, and we'll certainly be especially making that available to the committees. Because we know no 15 people can represent a school district of almost 17,000 kids, and so the input we get from the feedback form and focus groups is very important for our committees to grapple with.
And I just thought of a follow-up to that. Are we involving students in these committees?
We are going to issue the invitation to high school students. We thought about middle, but, and we have to figure out the right mechanism to do it. We also had a meeting yesterday with Sarah Louise Henry and Will Ruffin II to talk about the student school board's potential participation, and obviously, Director Marvin is the board's liaison to that. We haven't quite, because the student school board has not yet convened this year. And one of the great things that, about our student school board is that they have a lot of say in what they work on. So we're planning in the first meeting in October to pose to them the opportunity to engage in the strategic plan. And last year, we gave them 11 possibilities, and as you know, they focused on cell phones and attendance. So we're going to recommend this involvement in the strategic plan as one of the possible focus areas for the student school board this year when we get them together.
Thank you.
Dr. Wyman.
Will they be going out simultaneously, the form for the feedback and the invitation for, to meet on the committee? Is that open to the 23rd as well, and is that kind of a cutoff for all of it?
Superintendent.
Yes, Dr. Wyman. The invitation for the committees will go out after this meeting, as will the feedback form, because we really want to get, get moving. And so we'll make sure board members obviously receive both of those when they move out. The, the timeline for selecting the committees is not necessarily the 23rd, though. I'm obviously, maybe we should have Denise come up here because we're communicating with her.
Maybe the application were open from the 19th when we are selecting on the 25th, because our first meeting is the first thing that's over.
And we will, as I, as I mentioned, we'll be sure that if there are folks that board members want to urge to apply, that you have the information and you can send it out. And just, I think it goes back to the important question that has, a number of board members have asked. Sometimes people say, well, why do you make people apply to do something like this for free? And the reason is to have the diverse perspectives that are there. It's not because we don't want every person's energy and ideas. And we also spent quite a bit of time talking about the size of these committees. You know, this board is, is seven of you, and when we get to complex issues, it can be a challenge with seven people. And so I think 15 is robust, but not so large, and Spencer and his team have a ton of experience doing this. And so we landed on that as kind of the sweet spot, large enough to have diverse perspectives and lived experiences, but small enough for them to get to know each other, have real dialogue.
Dr. Cook.
I like the, the structure that's laid out here and the, the three committees that are sort of focused at different levels of our education system. I'm, I'm wondering about some of the topics that were part of our August 12 study section that didn't find an obvious home amongst the charge statements for these different committees, and what, if anything, the, the vision might be for pursuing initiatives around special education services or, there was a lot of discussion, it wasn't on the list, about extracurricular offerings, about mindset behaviors, steps for success, those types of things that are more systemic and sort of span the continuum, and even extend into some of the like community programming that, that comes through the district as well. So I, I'm just, I'm curious about some of the choices that are reflected already in these charge statements and some of the other priorities that may or may not eventually become part of the strategic plan and how that fits in, so.
Superintendent.
Yeah, I think I probably should do it. It's a, thank you for that question. The, the other priorities, like the mindsets, behaviors, and steps to success, or looking at our rates of identification for special education services that we talked about, will be integrated as system-wide initiatives this year that will be part of our work plan administratively, which the chair and vice chair and I were talking about when we should bring that to an upcoming board meeting. We ultimately decided adding them to a committee and an open-ended strategic planning process that really is about the stakeholders' perspectives was kind of assigning them very technical work. So those have not fallen off, and they may find expression in the strategic plan, but they definitely have not fallen off the to-do list. And so we have a set of, in fact, October 1, the plans all need to be developed and approved to move most of those initiatives forward. Off the top of my head, the only one that is not necessarily on the to-do list for this year is the credit recovery point. That one candidly, every, there's consensus on dissatisfaction with our current approach and not a particularly clear alternative right now. So that one is one we're not quite putting on the to-do list for the year. But the other things that we talked about are all going to find expression in the work that we'll be doing administratively, as opposed to putting it in the strategic plan.
Okay. Also, just to add, so like part of the question is like, what happens administratively versus strategically? The other question was, you see, we only have like three very, it sounds very intuitive that we have the elementary, middle, and high school as the focus areas. Earlier drafts of this had many, many more committees, like around particular program areas that more closely matched what we talked on the board study session. I think through conversation, we realized simplicity was better, and also focusing on student outcomes was better. So like, students should have a cohesive, coherent experience in each grade span. That also should build from elementary to middle to high. And so if we're focusing on students, that leads to committee structure that's built around students versus one that's built around adult systems, like, oh, let's have a committee on this, which may or may not translate to student experience. Our thought was, you know, AI, for example, that could fit in each grade span, but let's talk about in the context of what elementary schools' kids are experiencing. Contability could apply out everywhere, but let's talk in the context of everything else going around, around the middle schools. So we thought this is like a student-centered way to really make the committees hit all those larger ideas, but in the context of what's involved.
I would like to think that we're entering to, into the strategic plan so that whatever ideas we come up with, the sky's the limit. But we also know we're facing some budgetary issues. So there could be some really great ideas coming out of committees that we just can't afford. How, how and when do we look at that and make that decision?
Well, Madam Chair, you're looking at me, so I'm going to answer, but I'm going to invite Spencer to do that, too. That is, as we get beyond the stakeholder engagement phase, that really is the work of putting the full plan together, but it's also one reason for this two-sided structure, that that working group needs to be constantly thinking about capacity. Whereas the stakeholders that come to the table to envision exciting new ideas for our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, they shouldn't forget about capacity, but they shouldn't be bogged down by capacity. So that's one way we're trying to figure that out. The other thing I would say, Madam Chair, is that our current strategic plan, and just candidly, I don't think we had the capacity four years ago to do this well, does not include implementation plans. It doesn't include resource plans. We developed all of those things after you approved the plan. Our hope and intention this year is that the plan you vote for in May will include resource projections, timelines, and implementation, not at the like super detailed level, but at a level that spells out the deliverables in each year of the plan, so that when you're voting for the plan, you will be able to consider the degree to which our implementation strategies are realistic to achieving it. Whereas last time, we essentially settled on a set of 15 priorities, and then each year, we developed work plans around them. And I think that has been, we've still ended up in a good place, but it didn't force us to make hard decisions at the outset. I think one of the, for me, one of the biggest takeaways of the study session that Spencer facilitated was the challenge we all had in choosing from among those priorities Director Cook just mentioned, when you look at the complexity of the plan and the mix of initiatives that are there. So we're going to be ambitious but realistic, thank goodness. Are there other things you'd add to that approach?
That's very similar to what I was going to say. Like, I was always told, like, when you make a goal, you should be ambitious, but also feasible. So like, what's an ambitious but feasible goal? And I'm sort of thinking of the committees and working groups sort of doing the yin and yang of that. So with the full committee, you can be ambitious, like what, what do you hear from your, like, what's your big vision for what school should look like from your community? And you may not be an expert, you may not be a teacher, but, you know, you have a kid or you're part of this community, what's your vision? That can be very ambitious. And then the working group can be like, okay, how do we translate that into like operationally? Whose job is that? Where, where's the budget line in there? And so hopefully, the idea is sort of to have that sort of like grounding in reality and also bold vision can sort of happen through the structure with the broader committee and the working group. And they're both part of the same broader committee, but there's a way to sort of have both of those sides of the table to lead to like that good outcome. But to, to superintendent's point, our focus will be on drafting those recommendations, not the full application plan, but certainly with a mind towards implementation.
So our message to the community tonight, if they don't, and I know we use various communications, directly email, other, but if, if they don't personally receive a communication, will there be a space on our website where individuals can find either the focus group, I mean, either the, the survey or the application or information about the focus groups?
Yes, that all goes live, I believe, tomorrow. And so it goes tomorrow. And so this is the start of something really exciting. And I will also say that there, I have no doubt that while I'm sure everything that Spencer has walked us through tonight will happen and will execute it well, we will organically add parts to this process as we identify different needs that are there. And so it will be a flexible process because we need to make sure that by the time you're voting on a new strategic plan that would guide the work for the next four years, we really have looked at the big picture. So this is a good blueprint, but I'm sure it'll be a work in progress.
One last chance, board members?
Sorry.
Director Cook.
One other thing, I meant to, I meant to just note this, that I think naming explicitly the measures and the, like, the outcomes that are going to be relevant to this work is really, really important. And I'm glad that we've, we've been in this habit routinely for a while now. So I'm, I'm just really glad to see that. And I also like the addition of the percentage of students that live within RPS boundaries that ultimately enroll in RPS. I think that's a, we, we keep track of that anyway. It's very material to our operations. I, I'm glad that it's named as a specific outcome that we're trying to measure against. So I like that. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is our first prep-for-action item, policy committee recommendations. The policy committee met on August 22, 2025, and proposes the following recommendations to the school board. And this is the first of two prep-for-action briefings before the policy will be on the consent agenda on October 7. Director Workman, would you like to start the briefing?
Sure. Policy 427, workload limits for certain special education teachers, is part of the three-year review cycle. There are no model policy changes from MSBA or changes recommended by cabinet. Age of entrance to school, policy 513A, has been edited to clarify the decision and appeal process as requested by the chief academic officer. Instead of the chief academic officer making the decision after receiving a recommendation from a district team, the team will make that decision after carefully considering all the information presented. The policy committee recommends that the title of policy 606, textbooks and instructional material, be changed to curriculum and instructional materials. The edits in sections two through four and section seven reflect changes in MSBA model policy and recommendations from legal counsel. The language on reconsideration in sections five and eight was moved to 606.1, which also referenced procedure 606.1RA. The language in section six was removed and covered in more detail in a new policy, 606.1R. And these policies and procedures are online so that you can actually figure out what it was I just said.
606A is a procedure selection of instructional materials. It's been changed to align with the policy, and also there were changes to the administrative titles. 606B, policy reconsideration of instructional materials, has been rescinded and replaced with the new procedure. Procedure 606C, controversial topics, is being rescinded because a new policy addresses the same issue. Policy 606.1R is a new policy, question curriculum and instructional materials. It's an Rochester Public Schools-only policy, and it contains updates and language from policy 606 on reconsideration and procedure 606C on controversial issues. Legal counsel assisted with language in this policy. And then procedure 606.1RA, there's no test on this, by the way. It's a, a new It's a new proposed procedure about reconsideration of curriculum instruction, and includes a flow chart for the reconsideration process and a form for the request.
Procedure 609A accompanies policy 609, religious and religious and cultural observances. The policy was last reviewed in 2024, but the procedure was missed at that time, and there are no changes to this procedure. Policy 614, school district testing plan and procedure reflect the MSBA model policy elimination of section six that was made on November 14th, 2024. Policy 615, testing accommodations, had changes to the technical references, and those are the only changes and no changes recommended by cabinet. And procedure 620A, credit for learning, that procedure was not completed with a review of policy 620, 2023, and there are no recommended changes. Board members, any questions? Director Cook?
On the, the new Rochester-specific policy and accompanying procedure at 606 dot one, as I'm reviewing that and just kind of reflecting on, I know that certainly for our community, it's important how decisions are made about which curriculum materials and instructional materials are in our classrooms. Is there any context that could be shared from the policy committee on what this new policy is intended to address? What, what problem is being sought to be solved here?
Are we talking about 606 dot one R?
Yes.
Yes. So in the past, the, we had a separate policy on controversial issues. It's not an MSBA model policy. It was one that was adopted by a number of school boards in the 90s, I think, that was addressing a specific incident that had happened in some schools, and schools thought that they should have them. So, and at the same time, we have had a procedure for when people want to reconsider our curriculum or instructional materials. So we thought that since we were revamping the curriculum and instructional materials review process, we would look at how to handle that controversial issues and have legal counsel review it. And they made the recommendation that why don't we just cover it all in one policy? So it reflects the definitions that people might use, should they be wanting to reconsider the curriculum, and then, of course, the real detailed procedures. So it's, it is in a way to try to make it clearer for the community by having it all in one place and understanding our process for selecting curriculum, what our definitions are related to some of these questions or controversial material, and then how to be able, should they want to question it, either for their own individual student or for the district as a whole.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right. We have multiple other briefings. Should you have any questions in the meantime? Our next item is Prep for Action 10.2, resolutions for the MSBA delegate assembly. The board is scheduled to take action on this at the September 23rd meeting. Each year, the Minnesota School Board Association reviews and approves resolutions at the MSBA delegate assembly. Local school boards vote to submit resolutions to the full delegate assembly for consideration. And the legislative committee has developed proposals regarding resolutions for our board to submit to the delegate assembly. And I believe Director Workman's going to give us a little bit more overview and start discussion.
So I'll start with just a little bit more background on the delegate assembly. The delegate assembly is comprised of 135 school board members from across the state of Minnesota. Each school district in Minnesota may submit resolutions for them to consider. Individuals may not submit resolutions. This had been a practice a number of years ago, but that's been, the delegate assembly voted to not continue that. One thing that I think is important for this board to know is that a unanimous board vote is required before submission to MSBA. A resolution can cover any education topic that's of significant statewide concern and address desired legislative outcomes. The resolutions from the delegate assembly are not legislation. The resolutions are then researched and voted on by the delegate assembly. The ones that are adopted by a majority of vote by the DA guide the MSBA government relations team, which represents school districts in Minnesota. Positions adopted during previous years also become the MSBA staff lobbying efforts on behalf of all school board members in the state. For example, cross subsidy for special education is always there. It's always one of the things that we advocate for. So if you don't see it in this great big book that you get when you're in the delegate assembly, it's not gone and disappeared. So the legislative committee developed the three resolutions for the delegate assembly that are before you for briefing this evening. The board might also consider to including these resolutions in Rochester-specific resolutions that will be developed this fall and winter, which may be the same or different from or including these and perhaps different ones. But that's a separate process. So this vote is only for the resolutions to be submitted to the MSBA delegate assembly for consideration. Then the nominations for the delegate assembly are open till September 30th. There's a link to the nomination form in the MSBA email that you received on September 2nd. You may self-nominate. If you want to nominate another person, you need to get their permission before you do so. Elections are held electronically October 1st through 15th, 2025. The results will be announced on October 20th, 2020, 25. And then there is a two-year term, November, December of 2025 and November, December of 2026. So you need to keep these dates in mind to make sure that you would be available. The one, there's one virtual resolution briefing meeting, which would be on November 18th, 20th, or 21st, and you could choose whichever one you wanted to attend virtually. And then the delegate assembly itself meets in person on Friday evening, December 5th, and Saturday, December 6th, just in the morning. So if you, you know, if you have questions and you want to talk to any of us on the legislative committee about this, you know, feel free to contact us. So we have three resolutions before you tonight. Resolution one is to urge the Minnesota Legislature to enact legislation to transition from the High School Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, or the MCA, to the universally-accepted and nationally-recognized ACT, which is aligned more closely with career and post-secondary readiness. Using an assessment that is already widely administered statewide is more likely to accurately reflect student achievement, given the stakes it has for college admission.
Do we want to discuss each individually or together?
Let's read them off first, and then, sure.
The second proposed resolution is to urge the Minnesota Legislature to enact legislation establishing a study group to review and recommend updates to state statutes concerning post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO, to further strengthen the quality of education and to enhance the degree to which participation in PSEO prepares students for success in post-secondary education and the workforce, and evaluate the financial impact that student participation in PSEO has on high schools. This study should include an analysis of the number of high school students who take PSEO classes that are entirely asynchronous and online, and analyze the degree to which those classes engage students in deeper learning and prepare them for a successful post-secondary education and a career.
And I have the third resolution here, which would be to redesign the components of the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report that must be submitted to MDE each year to better align with best practices and continuous improvement, and to increase the value of the process of developing the report for school districts. The redesign should also include the creation of an interactive database that enables school districts to identify other districts that are pursuing similar goals and utilizing similar improvement strategies so that those districts can learn from each other and potentially work together to improve student outcomes.
Thank you, Legislative Committee, for your work. Board members, any questions or comments? And Director Workman, is it true that a, an individual district could have three?
Yes, I apologize, I forgot to mention that. I can give you a little bit more of the breakdown on that. So Rochester Public Schools is in Minnesota School Board Association District One, which includes three areas. We are in Area Two of District One, and Area Two has 14 school districts in that area. The total of number of school districts in all of District One is 42, and 13 of those, and we get 13 representatives chosen from among those districts. There were some changes in how the formula was used to figure out who gets what. And I'm happy to say that District One stayed the same status quo. We've had 13 before, and we have 13 now. There were a few districts that lost one or two people and other districts that gained. In most cases, not more than three delegates can be elected from the same school district. If there are more delegate nominations on the ballot than there are positions, alternates, alternates will be chosen. So last year for our area specifically, we voted within that area, and there were five seats positions. So instead of voting people in Area Two, just voting for Area Two, all of the areas in District One are compiled, and we all vote basically at large. So that's, that's a change.
So it's very important that we each submit our ballot when we get it from MSBA?
Right, and the ballots will be sent out, or the elections will be held electronically October 1st through 15th, and then the results will be announced on October 20th. So in the case that, you know, there are 13 nominees for the positions, and there are 13 positions available, then we don't have an election.
Okay. All right, Board members, we also have a chance to discuss this for action at our next meeting, but these are, these are really good priorities, and I, I'd like to carry over from the previous years with our MCAs. And I think we're looking ahead to tackle some of the issues that we've come across with the PSEO issue and the CACR report. So, thank you. All right, our next item is a prep-for-action item, our board meeting schedule for 2026, and we're scheduled to take action at the September 23rd meeting. Minnesota statutes 1304 subdivision one sets specific notice requirements for regular, special, and emergency school board meetings. If the school board sets a schedule for regular board meetings to be held during the year that specifies the date, time, and place for the meetings, and that schedule is kept at the district office, then no additional notice of those regular meetings is required. And the regular school board meetings are in the attachment. We generally follow a two regular meetings per month, usually on the first and third Tuesday, except for holidays and other dates where school board meetings cannot be held or to accommodate other district scheduling. We'll add study sessions to this schedule when the ABCD for 2026 is developed. And you might think, don't we usually do this in January? But we decided this year, we can do it at any time. We don't have to wait until the first meeting in January to set the dates. But this will help the superintendent, when he's drafting the ABCD for next year, for us all to know that these are going to be the regular dates and then can fit the study sessions as they go on. All right. Our next item is a prep-for-action on the certification of the proposed school district property tax levy payable 2025. This is a prep-for-action item. Superintendent Pacheco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You can all see Andy Croxton, our Director of Finance, coming. Andy is going to give the board an overview of where we have landed based upon very recently received calculations from the Minnesota Department of Education. This is literally up to the minute in preparing to share this with the board. So I want to thank Andy for his leadership and work. As board members are aware, approving the highest possible levy rate does not necessarily mean that is what will be ultimately approved in December, but this begins an important process.
Please.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me. Again, this is something I will not have done several years, sort of a perfunctory presentation at this point, because we'll be back in two weeks. And you actually won't be certifying the levy until December. And so this is the opportunity for you to provide me with any questions you might have, but ultimately, it's our report back to MDE that we are certifying the levy at maximum is what we're, will be requesting. And that will then be worked into the budget as we go through our work this fall. You've seen a lot of these slides before, and as Dr. Pacheco mentioned, this information literally came from MDE late last night, and we were just getting it finalized today. But the three areas in which we receive tax levy go into the general fund, community education fund, and our debt service fund. And it's very important to understand that in most instances, the levy amounts are established by MDE. We don't have much flexibility in the levy amount. We can, there are a few levers we could pull, perhaps, to lower, but generally, they're based on our debt service that's been approved by this board and through referendum by the voters. And then it obviously is the operating referendum dollars. Besides debt, it would be the operating dollars, including the referendum that was approved last fall. Building bond referents and capital projects. So again, these are the three areas in which we would receive those funds. It's important to obviously note that the levy is spread across to all homeowners, apartment owners, every taxable property within the district. And so as we get to the details later in the year, a percentage increase of, whatever the percentage increase in terms of the levy, doesn't necessarily mean that property owners' taxes are going to increase by that same percentage because, one, the market value of their home may have increased. We may also have more taxable property for which our tax levy will be spread across. So it's important to indicate that, just remember that as, as people think about those percentages. So where do we sit at this particular point? Again, this information just came from MDE late last night. In the general fund, we're actually looking at a slight decrease, and let me explain to you why that is. One, there's going to be some enrollment decline, and we know that. And so that, the operating referendum that was approved in 2024 and also the 2015 referendum are both tied to enrollment. So as enrollment increases, the levy would increase. And in this case, unfortunately, we're seeing some declines, and the levy would decline there as well. Also, for several years, there have been some debt service payments that are paid for by tax levy actually being paid out of the general fund, and they should have been paid out of the debt service fund. elders recognized that when we were going to work doing the bond issuance that you approved earlier this year, and recognized that we should move those, and informed MDE that we should move those three small debt issuances actually to the debt service fund. So that's why you're seeing an increase there, both for those issuances that had been existing and also for the new debt that we issued this year, the certificate of participation and the maintenance bonds that we issued. So that is the increase that you're seeing in the debt service. The community education is related to the school-age childcare for disabled children. There's an increase in there. That's due to a levy adjustment. So a prior year expenditures were such that we did not levy enough to cover those. So what happens then is the state reconciles that and provides an adjustment to us in a future period. We need to dig into that a little bit more, and we'll do that between now and December. I didn't have time to get to it before this meeting today, about why that actually occurred. But, but that is, again, a state program for that purpose, and right now, that is almost all entirely, that increases, biggest part of that is tied to the school-age childcare program. So as a whole, if we were to levy the maximum, it would be about a 6.5% increase over what we actually have approved for this year's levy. Just want to remind everyone of the tax implication and the importance of the tax levy on our budget. It is about 24%. So about a quarter of our budget is raised locally. And as you, as I've mentioned, obviously, that's spread out across general fund, operate, or the debt service fund, and of course, the community ed fund. So as an aggregate, just a reminder, we're looking at about $105.3 million in 2026 or fiscal year 27. We collect it next year, it comes to us the following fiscal year. Little bit more on the timeline. Again, this was intended to be fairly short because we'll be back in two weeks if there are other questions. And then we would have to certify this to MDE by the 30th, and then we'll do our annual truth in taxation on December 16th in a special meeting. And after that, then we would ask you to vote on the final levy certification for PAY26, which we then collect in fiscal year 27, and will be used in our fiscal year 27. which we then collect in fiscal year 27 and will be used in our fiscal year 27 budget planning.
Board members, any questions? Well, I always have to comment on the, how many pages is the MDE?
I think it's thirty-six or thirty-seven, I mean, it's long.
In the smallest, hardest to read type ever.
Yes, and, you know, someone who's been doing this for three years only, there's a lot of detail in there to dig through. So they've done a nice job of providing more of a supplement though, so thank you very much.
Great. Director Markman?
Yeah, and I think it's also important to remind the public that the reason that we usually set the levy at the highest amount allowable is because we can always decrease it. But if we come in with a lower amount, we cannot raise it.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Markman. Our next item is an action item, the approval of the superintendent goals for 2025, 2026. We first discussed this at the August nineteenth meeting and there was a some, a some update to the goals that were presented in that draft and that reflected the superintendent adding milestones that could be better measured and some timelines that we can track. Are there any questions or discussions, board members, before I read the rather lengthy resolution? All right, hearing none. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the following goals to guide the work of the superintendent during the 2025, 2026 school year. Dr. Pecal will lead the development of a new strategic plan to guide the work of Rochester Public Schools through the end of the 2029, 2030 school year that the RPS School Board will vote to approve before June first, 2026. The RPS School Board's review and approval of the new strategic plan will include verification that the provisions of the plan are aligned with the new mission, vision, values, and brand identity that the RPS School Board is scheduled to approve in October of 2025. Dr. Pecal will lead the development and implementation of the next generation of the RPS School Continuous Improvement Plan, skip process, to empower schools to meet the needs of their students within a district-wide framework for high-quality education and continuous improvement. Board members will review one skip from an elementary school, one skip from a middle school, and one skip from a high school, along with supporting documents and supplementary information to verify that the plans incorporate the elements of the skip two point O process that the RPS School Board approved at its regular meeting on April twenty-second, 2025. Those elements are listed below and a detailed description of the elements can be found at the link online. The performance measures include skip team members, parent caregiver involvement, needs assessment, components of the skip, level autonomy for schools, planned duration and timeline, the skip approval process, skip connections to budgets, staffing plans, and Title I plans, central office support, and RPS School Board monitoring. Three, Dr. Pecal will lead the development of proposals to enhance or discontinue use of the following facilities in RPS, Fridel, the Educational Service Center, Mighty Oaks, Skyline, Edison, P-Tech, C-Tech, and Mint Sync Online. The RPS School Board will review and approve final versions of the superintendent's proposals for improvement or sale of those facilities before July first, 2026. Four, Dr. Pecal will lead the development of a comprehensive, long-range plan for technology services in RPS that will guide educational, financial, and operational decisions until 2030 to provide enhanced technology support to RPS schools and departments. The RPS School Board will review and vote to improve, approve the technology plan before August first, 2026. Five, Dr. Pecal will lead an effort to refine the school-based component of the balanced budget model to build on strengths and address problems encountered during the 2024, 2025 school year and define and implement, implement the central office component of BBM. The RPS School Board will review and approve those modifications to the BBM as part of its review and approval of the school district's budget for the 2026, 2027 school year. The superintendent will also present the RPS School Board with a budget proposal that incorporates the reduction approved by the RPS School Board at its regular meeting on July fifteenth, 2025. And more information on that budget reduction target can be found at the link online. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution has been approved. Your goals have been set.
Work.
What are you going to do in your spare time?
Item twelve, other business. The current version of the ABCD is available in the agenda item and upcoming agenda items are being displayed on the screen. At the September twenty-third meeting, we have a focus topic which are, which is the twenty, twenty-six, twenty-thirty strategic plan update. I don't think that's right, is it?
It is not.
It is not, right, we did that tonight. Our monitoring, we're ahead. Our monitoring item is the elementary science curriculum implementation update, prep for action, the mission, vision, values, and brand identity, the policy committee recommendations from August. And we have action on the approval of the proposed school district property tax levy payable 2026, the resolutions for the MSBA Delegate Assembly and the policy committee, a new policy committee item. And these are recommendations that come from the 2025 statutory changes. And then a closed session on the superintendent evaluation on the outcomes measures for 2024, 2025. And then for October seventh, we have three monitoring items, the enrollment update, the newcomers programming update, and the report on the superintendent evaluation outcomes component. We'll have a prep for action on the language access plan and the action item on our new mission, vision, values, and brand identity. Anything board members would like to add to the ABCD for consideration? Hearing none. Our next three meeting dates, September twenty-third at five thirty is a regular meeting, October seventh at five thirty is a regular meeting, and October fourteenth at five thirty is a study session. And the next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section thirteen D O five subdivision three B, which allows the board to go into closed session pursuant to labor negotiation strategy. The closed session will be convened immediately following passage of the motion in the Edison Building, main floor, conference room. Pursuant to the law cited, will someone make a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The board goes into closed session at seven oh one PM.
The Board returned to the regular meeting at 7:24 PM. Clerk Morgan, will you please read the list of people present in the closed session?
Those present were Stephanie Whitehorn, Julie Workman, Karen McLaughlin, Kathy Nathan, Don Barlow, Justin Cook, Jean Marvin, Superintendent Kent Pecow, Director of HR Carl Bakken, and Chief Administrative Officer John Carlson.
Thank you. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:24 PM.